Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Pinal County Board of Supervisors for October 6th, 2021. We will start this proceeding with an invocation from our Pastor Jones and then Supervisor McClure will lead us in the pledge. So if you'll all stand.
I'm sorry I left you down the last time I was supposed to be here, but I was in the hospital a couple of weeks with that thing and then I've had two surgeries since then. I've had to put a lot of things off, but I'm going to quit putting things off starting tomorrow.
Perfect.
Let's ask the Lord to be present here in your activities today. So Father, we know from your word that we're not born out of season, that it was determined before the foundation of the world when we would be born. And Paul said, even the borders from which we would serve was determined. So this is our assignment and this is our time and our place. One of the founding fathers told us, the only way evil can prevail is for good men to do nothing. And Father, we have good men in this county. We just ask for your direction to them and to bless in this ceremony or in these procedures today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and visible, where there is never peace and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. So I'm going to rearrange the order real quick and we're going to go to item number two on the agenda first. We're going to do these presentations to our legislators and kind of thank them for everything they've done. So I believe Mr. Barnes is going to participate in this. But, you know, I think it's important that we take the time to recognize the hard work that they put in at the state legislature. I know that they take our calls, they look after our interests down here as best they can and it's a, for lack of a better word, almost a free-for-all at the state legislature on a daily basis. And there's a lot of moving parts up there, but we certainly thank all the hard work that our legislators take, you know, take pride in doing up here. So one of the things I do want to do, and I'm going to ask Mr. Shope because it was Senator Shope's partner Frank Pratt passed away, if he'd come up and say a few words
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, TJ Shope, State Senator, Legislative District Eight. Thank you for the opportunity to share a couple of words about my good friend, my mentor, my colleague, somebody who would always answer the phone for me and let me sit on his couch whenever I needed to talk about something that was going on. Our friend Frank Pratt, who represented Pinal County in the legislature in two different legislative districts over his period of time and a man who spent many years farming and ranching in Maricopa in Pinal County and a father of sons, has served in the Rotary Club here in Casa Gran, a businessman who owned Pratt Pools over in Casa Gran and a person who taught a lot of people how to scuba dive over the years, built a lot of swimming pools for people and served this county very well in the state legislature. He was a member, co-chair, chairman of many committees in that time addressing agriculture, environment, healthcare, education, energy and water, commerce and judiciary. Worked hard, gained the respect of his colleagues and was a trusted, likable, reliable leader who got things done with, I think probably the most important thing, very statesmanlike demeanor that didn't offer many words. And I think that if there's something I joked about last night, I always envied him because he had a little difficulty hearing and I oftentimes wish I had difficulty hearing while I'm on the floor. No offense to my colleagues who are here today, but we could all learn a little bit from him and put the microphone down more often and not get up to talk about everything. But that's who he was. He did it by, he used his finger on the voting box to do what he needed to do and I think he was responsive to all of you here. Some of you only was able to work with for one year, but your predecessors for sure in the 13 different cities that we represent in LDA, we're all going to miss them. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, you have, you would like to offer a moment of silence.
I would. So if you'll all stand and let's take a moment of silence in Mr. Pratt's honor. Just a couple of other little notes. You know, these legislators, they did, they were very instrumental in us getting some legislation passed last year with water, transportation and different things. So again, I can't thank you guys enough and you all have been responsive to phone calls or requests by, at least by me, and I appreciate that very much. So, Mr. Barnes, you want to come up? You going to announce the names?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Mark Barnes. Legislators, thank you for coming. To acknowledge our legislators' hard work and accomplishments, we have had a special awards prepared by a local Florence artist, Michael Baca, that highlight the beauty of Pinal County. And so we've had one of these prepared for each of our legislators. And so let me call up first if the board...
Okay. My boss, Tammy's, wants us down on the floor to hand these out. So anyway, so gentlemen, join, let's join our legislators down on the floor.
So legislators, while they gather on the floor, we're going to call you up in a certain order, not necessarily by rank, but we are going to start with Senator Leach. And then we'll go through the senators first. After you, after you come in and are presented with your award and a picture is taken, move off to the side if you would and let the, right, after you're done. And then we'll bring everybody back up for a group shot. And don't worry, I won't be in any of the pictures. So Senator Leach, if you would.
Gentlemen, hold it. And, tighten up just a tad. No, you guys are better than that. There you go. And three, two, and one more. Three, two, one. Very nice.
Okay. Senator Shope?
Oh, all right. Here we go. Just ten, there you go. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two. Very nice.
I like your picture the best.
And three, two, one. One more. Three, two. Very nice.
I like your picture the best.
And three, two, one. One more. Three, two. Very nice.
I like your picture the best.
And three, two, one. One more. Three, two. Very nice.
I like your picture the best.
And three, two, one. One more. Three, two. Very nice.
I like your picture the best.
And three, two, one. One more. Three, two. Very nice.
I like your picture the best.
All right. Three, two. And one more.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so we're going to do a group. Okay, while they assemble for a group shot, so...
Let me get all you up front and then supervisors if you feel like peeking between these ones. Don't go too far, otherwise you're covered. You're, there you go, right up front. No, no, no. Let's get you every other one. Actually, you're going to double up on one. There you go. Got it. Okay, here we go. That's quite a group. Three, two, one. One more. Nice.
There. Thanks. There. I'll just...
Mr. Barnes, and we, who was unable to make it today?
Several of our legislators were unable to make it. Representative Cook, Representative Fincham are out of town and then there are several vacancies.
And then there's several, yeah, the vacancies. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all again for all your hard work. Does any, any of the board have any comments?
Do we have one for Representative Pratt that we could give to his family?
Mr. Chairman, I want to say Representative, but Supervisor Goodman.
Please don't go down the road.
No, we, Representative Pratt chose a specific painting, just like all these individuals did.
Oh, good.
And that will be presented to Janice at some, Janice Pratt at some point.
Right. Good. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. All right. Thanks. Thank you. Mark. Okay. Let me get this out of the way. We'll go back to item number one, which is called to the public, consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Board of Supervisors may appear in person or submit written comment which shall be submitted to the clerk of the board by close of business hour 5:00 PM the day before, prior to the meeting. Comments shall be no more than 250 words. Actions taken as a result of public comment will be limited to direction to staff to study the matter or reschedule the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Ms. Kennedy, clerk, have any submitted, read comments?
Yes, Chairman. The clerk of the board office received three separate comments. Two of those comments are from the same constituent. So Mr. Sean Carter's comments, since we did receive two comments, and the first comment that we received did exceed the 250-word max, I will stop midpoint during his comment on the first one we received so that I can also have an opportunity to include the second email that he sent because it is two different subject matters.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. And we have copies of all of that. We, as the Board of Supervisors, have copies of his emails, correct?
That is correct, Chairman. Each board member has received a copy of both comments in their entirety.
Thank you.
From Sean Carter, from Salmonwell. In my opinion, I strongly believe that everyone should vote no on this bill. I know there has been strong views on this subject from the opposition to most of you. You have to stay strong on this. I live in a town and I have not once heard from anyone. I wish I could get the vaccine, but I couldn't get it. If this bill was passed and they are sitting there with no one coming to get the vaccine, what do you think would happen? I have a pretty good idea. It begins with them going and knocking on doors in our communities. This will be a violation of our privacy and I believe a violation of HIPAA. I would like you to read some quotes from people who work at Pfizer about the vaccine and the natural immunity. Nick Halls, Pfizer scientist, when someone is naturally immune, like they get COVID, they probably have more antibodies against the virus. When you actually get the virus, you're going to start producing antibodies against the multiple pieces of the virus. So your antibodies are probably better at that point than the COVID vaccine. I believe this is all about money and Pfizer is run on COVID money. Pfizer had a net of $15 billion last year. The information is out there. All you have to do is look. Stay strong and vote no, please. You cannot cave. The second subject matter from Mr. Carter is in reference to the expired lease in Eloy. I believe an independent investigation will need to look into this. He did not pay rent and he knows he did not pay rent. Nothing is free. Someone had to pay for that space. If he did not pay his rent, then the taxpayers paid for it and at the same time, the taxpayers paid for his services. Also, the clerk of the board office received a comment from James Spiegel, Public Health Service, Public Health Department. Equity Coordinator grant 3.2 million. I again urge those who voted no to vote no again. Where is the formal evaluation for the need for this grant? What is proof that minorities have experienced racism and that there are inequalities in distribution of the vaccine? Supervisor Kabenoff canvas is the only information you have that shows no need. This is a great political ploy designed to support Washington agenda. Please vote no. Arizona Department of Health Services grant 1.8 million. I urge you to vote no on this. Again, what is the proof, what is the proof of need here? What is the justification? No school has signed up for this. This grant has little to do with opening schools with 1.2 million is for online training. And training for what? This appears to be a waste of time and money. Please vote no. Number three. I'm sensing a pattern here. I could be wrong, but there appears to be no physically responsibility process where health services in this instance would provide a formal justification with hard evidence why they need any grant. For example, if there's racism, they must be required to define it and identify what it is, as you may have a bigger problem than COVID equity. Instead, they seem to toss grants over the fence to you, the supervisors, leaving you to try to figure out what the need, if any, is. Until formal justification is provided, no department should waste the board of supervisors' time. And Chairman, those are the only comments that the clerk of the board office have received.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to address the Board of Supervisors at this time?
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Eric Morrow, 22-year resident of Santan Valley on Adrenaline Avenue, and I'm here representing Santan Builders Group. We are, I'm here in support of the approval of the hiring of GIS specialists in the county assessor's office. We have a severe need and I believe the county assessor is working hard to rectify that need, but we can't do it without staff. And as you are concerning hiring, I also want you to consider the pay structure that comes with that. What's happening is a lot of municipalities are taking employees from Pinal County and that's happening probably not just in the assessor's office, but probably throughout the whole county. And that's because all the other municipalities, cities are paying a lot more than Pinal County. So as they're doing their studies, I would recommend that they evaluate not just pay structures here in Florence and Pinal County, but look to the other municipalities and see if we are on par with those municipalities because it's creating a problem in the county and which has a direct correlation to taxes and the ability for the county to receive revenue. So we are in definite support of the hirings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Taylor Rogers. I am one of the Outreach and Constituent Services representatives assigned to Pinal County from U.S. Senator Mark Kelly's office. I'm happy to be here as a part of Senator Kelly's team to listen and learn about the needs of Pinal County. My areas of assignment include Hila, Pinal, Graham and Greenlee Counties and the East Valley of Maricopa County. As an eastern Arizona native, I am grateful to be working in this capacity. I would like to take a few moments to explain my role of Outreach and Constituent Services from Senator Kelly's office. First, outreach involves communication and collaboration. For example, the senator is most interested in a successful rollout of the American Rescue Plan and wants to ensure that local residents receive the help they need and deserve. Continuing communication between his office and your jurisdiction about rollout progress can benefit all. As information becomes available that could be important to your jurisdiction, I will ensure it is communicated and directly, communicated directly to you in a timely manner. If it is an urgent matter, I will call or leave a voicemail. I will also be scheduling a visit with you from time to time to check in on the community. Second, casework is the main work that members of the Senate provide to constituents who request assistance. Our office defines casework as constituent questions and concerns involving federal agencies. If a constituent has a question that belongs to state government or to a local jurisdiction, the senator's office will make a referral to the appropriate local or state government agencies and nonprofit organizations that may offer additional services of need to our constituents. Constituent questions that involve the judicial system can only be referred to public legal assistance or to a judicial oversight entity. Constitutionally and ethically, the senator's office cannot interfere on matters of the judicial system. We are here to listen. We are here to learn. We are here to help. We are here to help local jurisdictions and our constituents obtain answers to their questions. I will send our casework link and postal address to you to share with your constituents who may need to contact the senator's office with a question or concern about a federal agency. We continue working towards solutions to help Pinal County through any issues that it may face. Thank you so much for having me here today. I look forward to working for and with you for the citizens of Pinal County and please let me know if there's anything our office can do for you. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Taylor. Have a good day. Is there anyone else?
I just forgot to leave my swag.
Okay. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to item number three. Volker.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, members of the board, Kent Volker, Pinal County Attorney. With the chair's permission, I'm here to read a proclamation, but I'd like to set the stage if that is okay with the chair.
Sure.
I'd like to begin by first actually thanking Madam Clerk and her entire team. As everybody's aware, in Pinal County, we all wear lots of hats and there's been, as the gentleman spoke about earlier, there's been unfortunately a lot of turnover that has occurred. And I can tell you that I wouldn't be here if it wasn't actually for Madam Clerk because about a week ago, on top of her tons and tons of other duties, she sent a very simple email and just said, hey Kent, you guys always do your proclamation. I haven't seen it yet. Are you doing one this year? Very kind, very just friendly reminder and frankly, it just slipped through the cracks. I mean, our office has a lot of things going on. It was sitting there for me to approve. I dropped the ball, but it was Madam Clerk who actually brought to my attention. That's one of the beautiful things about this county, sorry, didn't mean to click that, is we all look out for each other. We've all got each other's back. So I want to thank Madam Clerk and her staff because they're picking up for me and I certainly appreciate that. My team certainly appreciates that. Otherwise, we would have been scrambling to try and get something in. We're here today to talk about the proclamation. There's a lot of things that I'm incredibly proud about this county. We have, combined with our law enforcement personnel, combined with our entire criminal justice system, probation, our courts and everything else, we've done a tremendous job in reducing crime in this community. We're at about half the rate that Maricopa has, so a person in Maricopa is twice as likely to be a victim as a Pinal County resident. You've heard me talk about this before. Pima County, three times as likely. But there's one area that we have not been able to lick and that's domestic violence. October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I want to give you just some quick stats before we read the proclamation so you understand what we're facing. During the pandemic, the calls for services have almost doubled regarding domestic violence calls. The number of victims that we have has increased well north of 10%. The number of services provided have more than, grown by more than 20%. So while we're having all of other crime, we're doing a good job of addressing it and really knocking it down, domestic violence is that one thing we haven't addressed. The reason that I read these proclamations, I come before you, and we had an excellent event yesterday, and actually Madam Clerk was there as well, is this is our opportunity for our community to stand together, united, to say, look, enough is enough. Again, I talked about this yesterday. Domestic violence isn't something that we can arrest our way out of. It's not something that I can punish people into not doing. It's an interpersonal conflict that people need skills to address. And this board, by adopting this proclamation, if you choose to, and as a community standing up saying enough is enough, that's our community showing, or excuse me, that's our commitment to our community, that we're going to do everything we can to keep our community safe and to really address this, this insidious sort of underlying problem we have. And with the chair's permission, now that I've, I can step off my soapbox, I'd like to be able to read the proclamation.
Please do.
Whereas, domestic violence is prevalent in every community and affects all people, regardless of age, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion or nationality. Whereas domestic violence can result in physical injury, psychological trauma and even death, the devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and last a lifetime. Whereas in 1998, Congress passed Public Law 101-112, officially designating October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and such legislation has been passed each year since. Whereas, one in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced some form of domestic violence. Whereas, 24 people in the United States are victims of intimate partner violence every single minute. Whereas nationwide, an average of three women are killed by a current or former intimate partner every day. Whereas, on a typical day, there are more than 19,000 phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Whereas nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by intimate partner and 72% of all murder suicides involve an intimate partner. Whereas approximately 26% of children under the age of 18 are exposed to domestic violence in their lifetime and one in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year. Whereas, men exposed to domestic violence as children are four times more likely than other men to perpetrate domestic violence as adults. Whereas in 2020, there were 102 domestic violence-related deaths in Arizona. Whereas in 2020, the Pinal County Attorney's Office Victim Services Division provided services to 2,265 victims of domestic violence. Whereas we are determined to respond to crime and violence by helping victims find not only support, recovery and justice, but also a sense of hope for their future. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that we are providing accessible, appropriate and trauma-informed services to victims of intimate partner violence. Excuse me. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and reaffirm the county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists victims of intimate partner violence during Domestic Violence Awareness Month and throughout the year. our way out of, it's not something that I can punish people into not doing, it's an interpersonal conflict that people need skills to address. And this board, by adopting this proclamation, if you choose to, and as a community standing up saying enough is enough, that's our community showing, or excuse me, that's our commitment to our community, that we're going to do everything we can to keep our community safe and to really address this, this insidious sort of underlying problem we have. And with the Chair's permission, now that I've, I can step off my soapbox, I'd like to be able to read the proclamation.
Please do.
Whereas, domestic violence is prevalent in every community and affects all people, regardless of age, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality. Whereas, domestic violence can result in physical injury, psychological trauma, and even death, the devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and last a lifetime. Whereas, in 1998, Congress passed Public Law 101-112, officially designating October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and such legislation has been patched past each year since. Whereas, one in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced some form of domestic violence. Whereas, 24 people in the United States are victims of intimate partner violence every single minute. Whereas, nationwide, an average of three women are killed by a current or former intimate partner every day. Whereas, on a typical day, there are more than 19,000 phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Whereas, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by intimate partner, and 72% of all murder-suicides involve an intimate partner. Whereas, approximately 26% of children under the age of 18 are exposed to domestic violence in their lifetime, and one in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year. Whereas, men exposed to domestic violence as children are four times more likely than other men to perpetrate domestic violence as adults. Whereas, in 2020, there were 102 domestic violence-related deaths in Arizona. Whereas, in 2020, the Pinell County Attorney's Office Victim Services Division provided services to 2,265 victims of domestic violence. Whereas, we are determined to respond to crime and violence by helping victims find not only support, recovery, and justice, but also a sense of hope for their future. And whereas, Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that we are providing accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services to victims of intimate partner violence, excuse me. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Pinell County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and reaffirm the county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists victims of intimate partner violence during Domestic Violence Awareness Month and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to victims of intimate partner violence, so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. That is the end of the proclamation. There is one thing that I did inadvertently miss, and I apologize. You know, there is a, a actual, an opportunity, and I believe it's going to get pulled anyways, but on Agenda Item K, part of that Agenda Item specifically designate certain money to go to those victims of domestic violence and allow them to be placed. So obviously, I think it's pertinent under these circumstances, but there is something that actually relates to this county being able to provide additional services. I did want to provide that additional information to the board.
Thank you. So Eddie?
I guess I would just ask, I would ask that the board formally adopt the proclamation, and if the board so chooses, I'd ask everybody to come down and take a picture as well, because we'd like to post it, and again, kind of celebrate that we are united in this front.
Very good. So any questions or comments for our county attorney?
Nope.
If not, board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclaiming October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Unanimous? Thank you. And county attorney, like a photo of us.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Pull just a little higher. There you go. And, three, two, one, one more, three, two. A la matraal.
Okay. Brings us to item number four, County Manager's Report.
Chairman Miller, Members of the Board, Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager, acting on behalf of our County Manager Leo Liu, who is presenting at the IMCA Conference on behalf of Pinell County. We have nothing to add to the agenda today. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moves us to item number five, Purchasing Division Report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. I'm Randy Simpson, Interim Finance Director, and I will be delivering your Purchasing Division Report for October 6, 2021. First up today, the board is requested to approve the following contract amendments. Number one, RFP 180223. We recommend approval of Amendment Three to exercise the optional extension period from October 13, 2021 through October 12, 2022, for inmate commissary and banking services with Aramart Correctional Services LLC. This contract is used by the Sheriff's Department. Please note that the purchasing report cover page has an error stated on this item, which is item number one. It states the annual contract spend is anticipated to remain around $218,000. However, there is no cost to the county, $218,000 is the anticipated revenue amount. The version presented to the clerk today reflects that change. Item number two, RFP 190624, Electronic Poll Books. We recommend approval of Amendment Two to exercise the optional extension period with No Ink LLC for electronic poll books. This contract is used by the Elections Department. Annual spend is anticipated to remain around $35,000. Item number three, IFB 180123. We recommend approval of Amendment Four to allow additional materials be added to the contract with pavement restoration for pavement maintenance materials. This contract is used by Public Works. And finally, item number four, IFB 220826. We recommend approval of Amendment One with Waste Management of Arizona and Republic Services, Inc., to remove the Justice Court in Superior Arizona location from the Waste Management of Arizona contract, and add to the Republic Services, Inc. contract for commercial refuse collection and public recycling services. And that concludes the Purchasing Division Report for October 6.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none? Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Purchasing Division Report dated October 6, 2021.
Is there a second?
Chairman, if we can change that motion to include the change that was presented during the presentation, and it is...
The 218...
Motion would be to approve as presented, correcting RF, RFP 180233, last sentence to read, annual revenue is, is anticipated to remain around the $218,000.
Okay. So you had this in front of me already. My bad. So you're like my wife at home. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve as presented with the changes, the error of RFP 180233, the last sentence read, the annual revenue is anticipated to remain around $218,000.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you, Randy. Okay. Consent items. So, item number six, so this consent items, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time, the agenda item is called. And I know we're going to pull, I'm pulling off E and F, so, because I've got my, my people here, my peeps are here, that's a good thing. And I also have been requested to pull K and AH. Does anybody else want anything else pulled? Manager's office? Public? Anybody from the public want a...
Chair, can we pull Alpha Edward AE?
AE. Okay. Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the consent items as presented, with the exception of EF, K, AE, and AH.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. So now I'm going to ask that Kathy and Esther come up and... Kathy Martinez, you've got to read your own proclamation. That's the way we do it here.
For the record, state your name and who you're with and...
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Kathy Martinez. I am the County Director and Family Consumer and Health Science Agent with the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension. Thank you for allowing us to be here today.
Thank you.
The first proclamation we have, I'll read, the second will be read by one of our 4-H members, Wesley Ramos. First proclamation by the Board, Pinell County Board of Supervisors for University of Arizona Cooperative Extension Day on October 9, 2021. Whereas, the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, Pinell County, is the outreach arm of the University of Arizona and brings the university to the people. And whereas, Cooperative Extension's mission is to engage with people through applied research and education to improve lives, families, communities, the environment, and economies in Arizona and beyond. And whereas, Cooperative Extension Field Crop Systems Programming provides research and resources to Pinell County's agricultural community. And whereas, Cooperative Extension's master gardeners are university-trained volunteers who serve as community educators, providing research-based information on environmentally responsible gardening and landscaping to the public. And whereas, Cooperative Extension has developed and provided programs to promote strong, healthy families. And whereas, Cooperative Extension demonstrates outstanding leadership and tireless efforts in addressing nutrition education and physical activity through expanded food nutrition education program, diabetes prevention program, and the Arizona Health Zone programming. And whereas, Cooperative Extension 4-H gives youth that extra edge for life success by offering numerous opportunities to develop leadership, responsibility, citizenship, and other life skills. And whereas, Cooperative Extension provides innovative programming, including strengthening families, parent education, and financial literacy education programs. And whereas, Cooperative Extension is committed to delivering high-quality, relevant educational programs and information to Pinell County citizens and communities. And whereas, Cooperative Extension also provides many vital programs and services to the community for young children, including developmental, sensory, and oral health education and screenings, and childcare health consultation. And whereas, Arizona Project Wet develops water stewardship and STEM literacy by providing teachers professional development that evolves instructional practice and deepens content knowledge, direct student outreach that delivers or extends classroom learning and, and community engagement. And whereas, support for University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, Pinell County, and continued coordination of collaboration among federal, state, and local governments is vital to ensure sustainability as the state's premier non-formal education network. Now, therefore, we, the Pinell County Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim October 9, 2021, as University of Arizona Cooperative Extension Day throughout Pinell County, and encourage all citizens to recognize the Cooperative Extension for the significant impact they have made to their commitment to delivering high-quality, relevant educational programs and information to Pinell County citizens and communities. Proclaim this sixth day of October, 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? If not, board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number E as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. I'm going to have the next one read, and then we'll do photos for both after the...
We also have some invitations for you all for our event on October 9, our Cooperative Extension Day event in Casa Grande at the county office complex.
Oh, thank you. Is our 4-H guy here?
Chairman, Board of Supervisors, I'd like to thank you for letting me speak today. I am Wesley Ramos, from, member of 4-H. I'm here for, to help Kathy. So whereas, 4-H youth across the nation are keeping it green by leading efforts to solve problems, and their communities raise awareness about environmental issues and make a difference for their futures. Whereas, 4-H is one of the largest youth development organizations in Arizona, and the largest in the nation with 6 million young people. Whereas, 4-H in Arizona provides non-formal educational programs and experiences for more than 17,000 young Arizonans. Whereas, 4-H is part of the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, is a program where youth learn through opportunities that provide them hands-on experiences with 4-H's mission, mandates of service, engineering, and technology, health, living, and citizenship. Whereas, 4-H youth will be members of all program adversity and program activity communities at the state of local levels. Whereas, 4-H has connected youth and their communities with the... ...innovative research and resources from our nation's 106 land-grant universities and colleges for more than 100 years. Whereas, National 4-H Week helps find your spark through incredible experiences that 4-H offers young people, and highlights the remarkable 4-H youth in Arizona who work each day to make a positive impact for those around them. And whereas, the National 4-H Week occurs during the same period of time during October. Therefore, we, the Pinell County Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim October 3 through October 9, 2021, as Pinell County 4-H Week through Pinell County. Proclaim it this day, sixth day of October, 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So any questions or comments for our county attorney?
Nope.
If not, board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclaiming October 3 through October 9, 2021, as Pinell County 4-H Week through Pinell County. Proclaim it this day, sixth day of October, 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So any questions or comments? If not, board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number E as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. I'm going to have the next one read, and then we'll do photos for both after the...
We also have some invitations for you all for our event on October 9, our Cooperative Extension Day event in Casa Grande at the county office complex.
Oh, thank you. Is our 4-H guy here?
Chairman, Board of Supervisors, I'd like to thank you for letting me speak today. I am Wesley Ramos, from, member of 4-H. I'm here for, to help Kathy. So whereas, 4-H youth across the nation are keeping it green by leading efforts to solve problems, and their communities raise awareness about environmental issues and make a difference for their futures. Whereas, 4-H is one of the largest youth development organizations in Arizona, and the largest in the nation with 6 million young people. Whereas, 4-H in Arizona provides non-formal educational programs and experiences for more than 17,000 young Arizonans. Whereas, 4-H is part of the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, is a program where youth learn through opportunities that provide them hands-on experiences with 4-H's mission, mandates of service, engineering, and technology, health, living, and citizenship. Whereas, 4-H youth will be members of all program adversity and program activity communities at the state of local levels. Whereas, 4-H has connected youth and their communities with the... ...innovative research and resources from our nation's 106 land-grant universities and colleges for more than 100 years. Whereas, National 4-H Week helps find your spark through incredible experiences that 4-H offers young people, and highlights the remarkable 4-H youth in Arizona who work each day to make a positive impact for those around them. And whereas, the National 4-H Week occurs during the same period of time during October. Therefore, we, the Pinell County Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim October 3 through October 9, 2021, as Pinell County 4-H Week through Pinell County. Proclaim it this day, sixth day of October, 2021.
Thank you. Well done. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just make a comment before I...
Sure.
If there's no others, I'd like to make a motion as well, but, you know, I've, over the years, I've been involved with various 4-H programs with my kids and, and other community youth that have come to me and asked me for use of some of the property and things that we've had, and, and it's quite an amazing program to see, especially for you to come forward and speak on, on behalf of the 4-H program and read a proclamation in front of us. And so, it's an amazing program, and it's one that I have always been committed to. So, thank you.
Welcome. And I'll echo those thoughts. I always enjoy seeing the projects, particularly when we have fairs that we can go to and stuff. And it's a terrific organization, it teaches a lot of responsibility, it teaches the benefits of being responsible, it also teaches you capitalism and how things can, can really be a benefit to you. So, well done. Thank you for sharing with us today. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Goodman, did you say you have a...
I do. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number F as number, item F as presented.
I'll, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Now, we can go down and get our pictures taken again.
Just follow in the action.
This one side is always loose. There you go. And, three, two, one, very nice, one more, three, two, one.
Sorry, Esther struggled as usual.
I don't know why I do that.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
This is what?
Okay. Just following the action. This one side is always loose. There you go. Three, two, one. Very nice. One more. Three, two, one.
I don't know why I do that.
Thank you.
Is that okay? Back here. Okay, I believe item K is the next one up. Discussion approval, disapproval to execute funds for home ARP grant.
Hi. Good morning.
At least some kind of a presentation of this?
Well, good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Heather Patel with the Finance Department. I will share a few things about this and then open it up for questions.
Perfect.
The home ARP program was allocated, of course, under the American Rescue Plan Act. Because we are a home participating jurisdiction, these funds were automatically provided to us. The first step is to execute this funding agreement. The next step is that we are to hold certain public participation processes, reach out to different organizations who are our partners, and identify how we would like to use the funds. We will create what they're calling an allocation plan. We will then submit that allocation plan to HUD, and they will approve it or disapprove it or whatnot. And then we will be able to complete our project. So at this point, the only thing that we have done is we have reached out to some of our partners and spoken to them individually. We are also going to be talking about this item at our Penal County Coalition to End Homelessness, which is next week. And from there, we'll sort of come up with some ideas for how we would like to use the funding. And then, at some point within the next couple of months, we will do a public hearing before the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to see this. I'm acquainted with a number of homeless people in the town where I live, and I wondered if an application for this, it sounds like there wasn't an application. You couldn't identify how many in total approximate homeless people are in Penala County, could you?
Great. Thank you, Chairman Supervisor Kavanaugh. We can base that off of what is the annual point in time count, which is done every January. And unfortunately, this year, it was not completed because of COVID. But our 20-year, we had over 100 unsheltered homeless people within Penala County. That does not account for the people who are in domestic violence shelters or temporary housing through those organizations. It does not count for people who are within what is called our homeless management information system. So if somebody approaches one of our partnering organizations, and they have indicated that they are homeless, they do an intake, they get put into the system, and then they are offered services through all of our partners, whether it be for housing or other services. So, we can't just say that there's 100 unsheltered people. There's plenty more because they go in and out of the system. So, yeah, I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. And what is the process in the past? I know this might be a little bit new, but what is the typical process, if you know? Do they go to a halfway house, a temporary, a hotel first? Do you know how that works?
Okay. Various things can happen. We have what's called our coordinated entry system. So it is, basically, we have what we call a no-wrong door. So you go into an organization and you say, "I am homeless, I need help." And then we are supposed to refer you to an organization that can help you, depending on what your situation is. Obviously, if you are a veteran, we would focus you more on a veteran-serving organization. If you are experiencing domestic violence, then we would refer you to one of those organizations. And then, depending on what program they would fall under, what funding is available, it could be that you are temporarily placed into a hotel. It could be that we were able to find some sort of rental facility for you to go into. But in Penala County alone, we do not have emergency shelters for the general population who is homeless. So, it just depends on what would make them eligible under different programs.
And one last quick question. Would this provide any of those temporary shelters, funding for any temporary shelters that we could either own or rent from somebody who's already...
Yes. Yes, absolutely. So the funding can be for the acquisition, the rehabilitation, or the purchase of some type of facility. What is sort of the trend right now is to purchase old hotels, renovate them, and make them into transitional temporary shelters. We could also provide funding to our nonprofit organizations to provide what is called tenant-based rental assistance. So essentially, whoever the person is who enters the program, they get to find rental unit, and then we would pay the rent for them to a certain point. The problem with that is that we have a lack of rental units within Penala County. We have a lack of landlords who are interested in participating in these types of programs. And we have high rental, the dollar amount to rent is more than what we can pay for with these programs. So those are some things that we will take into consideration when we are talking with our partners to figure out what our proposed plan would be. We'll create the allocation plan, and then we will have a public hearing before the Board of Supervisors to share that plan, and then ultimately submit it to HUD.
Very good. Thank you.
And I just, quick, for understanding in my head, that's going to be like the next step is when you meet with the partners and you will kind of brainstorm how you may want to spend this money going forward, and what might be the most cost-effective things to do with it. Am I right? And then we're going to come back and have a public hearing about it.
That is correct, Chairman, yes. So our partners who experience and work with this population all the time, they'll be our best resource to figure out how best to use these funds. This is a one-time grant. We don't anticipate receiving funds like this again in the future. Our regular home allocation is about $600,000. This is 2.2 million. So it's important that we figure out the best use for this, something that we can use on a longer period of time that will have an ongoing benefit to our homeless population.
And to be able to work with our partners and have options is going to be a really important part of that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Well, I was along the same line. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Along the same lines, but based on the information that you're giving right now, it seems to me like a more permanent-type solution to the problem is where we probably ought to be heading. Okay.
Thank you.
Using these funds to do so. So, all right, thank you.
Supervisor, certing.
Yeah, I think it's important that we make sure that this does go to the people that need it and not just to pad the pockets of the salaries of the nonprofits that will be dispersing it. So, it's something for us to watch for.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Good. Board's pleasure on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item K as presented.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that brings us to, well, that was, which one was that? AE. So, AH. No, AE, I mean. AH is what we just did. I'm not going in order, I guess.
Thank you, Chair. Ken Valkmer, Penala County Attorney. May I, sir?
Sure.
I ask this to be pulled, just because you'll see these occasionally, probably maybe every two or three months. Just, I know the board's aware of this, but so the public's aware of it, so everybody understands the process, and I think this is a great example to use. Under legislation, if there is money taken, what's formerly known as RICO or civil asset forfeiture, for the agencies to use their money, they simply have to go to our office and say, "Hey, we'd like it to use this money for this purpose." We evaluate and say, "Is this a legal purpose?" If it's a lawfully authorized purpose, it gets granted, there's no questions asked. I don't get to substitute my judgment. We just sign off, and they get to use their funds. However, if I, as the county attorney, want to use any of our funds, I have to come before the board, and we have to make a presentation to the board. We normally throw in the consent agenda because, you know, I don't play in the gray zone. It's very clear. We make sure there's a statutory reference. If you look at the follow-up, there is a statutory reference. Again, because there's been a handful of these this year, and I haven't really addressed it with the board, I wanted to make it very clear. This is actually one of my very favorite uses of those funds, and it gives me an opportunity to really pitch a great event that I inherited. So 31 years ago, he was, at the time, a county attorney and then became a judge, Robert Bean, came up with what was a really good idea and said, "We need to find a way to reach our youth at a very young age and get them thinking about drugs and why they shouldn't use them." So 31, I think it's actually 32 years ago, because last year we might have had to skip it. But Bob Bean said, "Look, what we should do is we should reach out to every sixth grader in the entire county and ask them to design a poster that's got like a saying and show their artwork, but make them think about using drugs and why they shouldn't use drugs." So we've continued that process through county attorney after county attorney after county attorney. Right now, I think we sent out about 1,400 poster boards. I think we're going to get between 800 and 900 back, it looks like. But what happens is, once we get all of those posters back, I invite our judges, or our presiding judge, or presiding criminal, or presiding juvenile judge. They come in and actually judge, and they narrow down all these posters. And then, once we get to top 10, we do a celebration with them. This year, I think we're going to take them to the courthouse. Our sheriff's going to give them kind of a visit to the jail. And then, I think one of the coolest things is, is when you walk out of courtroom 2C, that's where EDC's at, that's where most of our drug cases are actually adjudicated at. When you come out just to the left, you actually see the top 10 posters from all of the kids. So when they come out, they're actually seeing that. When they go into court, they see those pictures, and then we do a big celebration. These funds are actually used to be able to hold that celebration. This year, we're going to do it here at the Florence Auditorium, where the top 40 plus the top 10, their parents, their family, come in and we celebrate them. Most of our chiefs of police show up, there's a great law enforcement, we shake all the kids' hands, and it's a really good opportunity to make kids think about substance use and abuse. You know, everybody wants to say sixth grade's too young. Well, what we know is that's when kids start experimenting, that's when they start getting exposed, as they enter junior high, as they enter middle school. So I would ask the board to approve this, but I also, I want to make sure the board knows sort of some of the things this is used for, but it's also a great event, and I would formally invite all of you, if you have any interest in coming. It's about an hour, an hour and a half on like a Tuesday or Wednesday night. It's a pretty neat event, and I will tell you, seeing those kids' eyes light up and hearing some of those stories makes it all worth it. There's been a couple stories where, you know, I'll give you an example from a kid last year. His father was sent to prison for an unrelated issue, but he had really been in the doldrums for about a year, had been really sort of in his own shell. Think, you know, think your 10, 11, 12-year-old kid's dad goes in. And then, you know, he loved art, that was sort of his outlet, and he did just an absolutely tremendous poster, and he got in the top 10. And when we celebrated him, he smiled, and his mom came up to us afterwards in tears saying, you know, "This is the first time I've seen my boy smile and truly be proud in, you know, over a year." Like, this is so meaningful. And every year, there's one or two cases. Two years ago, we had a young man whose aunt had actually overdosed, and the family had never really been able to talk about it as a family, but because of the event, it was able to have that conversation. So this is something that impacts our community again and again, and for generations moving forward. So, it's a great event, and I would ask the board to approve this because this is really the way that we get to celebrate these kids and their families for their outstanding work. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Good.
Comments?
You know, just a comment in regards to what you're talking about, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, as you were sitting there talking about that grade, sixth grade, I remember, we did something similar to that. And I know that's kind of hard to believe, that drugs was an issue back when I was a kid. Of course, that was the '60s. But at Fremont Junior High in East Mesa, we did something very similar to that, and it was so impactful on me that I made a decision, I was never going to touch alcohol or drugs, ever. And I've been able to live true to that to this day. So I see, when you're amongst peers and you're doing that kind of thing, I can see wholeheartedly how this works. Thank you.
Anything else? Board's pleasure.
So, Mr. Chair, with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve item number AE as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ms. Kennedy? Did you see an email that just came through? From Mary Ellen Kazda? Did you see it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I responded to her email, letting her know that that item is coming up and to copy me, and I would make absolutely certain her comments are included at the next meeting.
Very good.
I can see an actual...
Okay. I just, I wanted to make sure that somebody or somebody responded to her, so, okay. It seems to be a timing issue with when it was sent in, what have you, but we'll try and clear that all up. All right. Sorry for the delay. Brings us to item number seven, which is the public health. So I'm going to recess. Oh, AH? Didn't we do AH?
No.
AH, sorry. There he is.
There he is. Bring it on. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to present on AH. If members will recall, back in April, it might have been March, we briefed the board in executive session on an ongoing project to clear old, uncollectible taxes.
Oh, yes.
We're talking about business, personal property taxes. So, we did the first round that we presented to the board back in June. That round was, those were abated, and here we are presenting the second round. I will say, there are some discrepancies in the cover sheet that I sent to the board originally. We originally had 26 properties on that list. That was later reduced down to 19 properties. And when I originally counted, I counted 20. So there is a discrepancy with the number of properties. There are, on the list that is presented to the board, there are 19. And on that list, the total amount of taxes due is $672,107.32. Of that, the actual amount of taxes owed is $211,883.6. So, total interest and penalties due on those 19 properties is $460,224.26. We are requesting or asking the board to approve the abatement of those 19 properties as presented, the total being $672,107.32. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman, that answered my question.
That answered your question? That's fantastic.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
Why are these, I mean, why are some of them so old that they've just been sitting there?
They've been sitting there. Either we've been searching for them or researching them, trying to find them. We used to have, or we do have a process by which you can collect the property and seize it. We do have a process in place in the county to do that, but over time, they just sat, and we are here now. I can't explain why and how we got to here, but we're here now, and we're trying to clear them out so that we can kind of move forward. One of the problems is, these sit as open accounts, essentially, for the county, and we know, based on the research that we did, we're never going to collect on this stuff. So, to answer your question, I can't answer specifically why. My predecessors or people before me didn't do this stuff, but here we are now, and we're here to clear it and kind of clean the slate moving forward.
No, I'm glad it's cleared up. I just, I mean, and in reality, it's a very small percentage of the number of properties we watch over, but it's just, you know, they do slip through the cracks, but it's unfortunate.
Yes.
Needs to be called earlier. Thank you.
Absolutely.
They, a lot of them are prior administrations. I mean, it just goes back, when I was looking at the dates on them and stuff.
Some of them go back to the '90s even.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So, impossible to track all that down.
And again, and not to cut anybody off, but we're talking about business, personal property, so tracking down that personal property and businesses that are not in existence anymore is virtually impossible, so.
Okay. Any questions or comments? That, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Just for clarification purposes, when the board does make a motion, if you would make the clarification that it is attached 20 parcels as opposed, I mean, attached 19 parcels as opposed to attached 20 parcels, as the agenda item reads.
Okay. 19, not 20. We'd like to make that motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item AH as presented with the changes of 19 parcels and not 20.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Thank you.
I just have it. Thank you. Now am I on seven? I need another piece of paper up here. So, I'm going to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting right now and move to the Public Health Services Board of Directors meeting. And we've had a request to pull... And we've had a request to pull both A and B on the consent. Is that how many total we have? And then, we have a public hearing. I now open up the Public Health Services Board of Directors' meeting. Consent items, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless board member or the county manager or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. We've asked for both A and B to be pulled. And that's all we have. And is this, and this is the email that this woman, is this the item that she wanted to refer to?
I don't think so. I think this, that the item...
Or is it for next week?
Next week.
Next week, okay. Okay. So, because we've pulled both items, we'll just start with item A.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Miller, Board of Supervisors, Tasha Spears, Public Health. I understand both items have been pulled. I can present a brief explanation of those and then certainly will welcome any questions. With regard to item A, that is what is referred to as the ELC, K-12 funding. That is epidemiology lab capacity funding that is actually assigned to each county. So this is not a competitive application for a grant. These are funds that are allocated to each county and these funds are population-based. This particular funding was allocated to go to services that would be provided to Pinnell County schools where students or teachers had suffered from COVID. There were particular deliverables that were allocated for this funding source and they were items such as food boxes for children who had COVID and were required to stay home. There were also supportive services such as behavioral health or emotional support services. And those would be for students who had COVID and experienced a variety of issues such as depression, anxiety, perhaps grief from loss of a family member to COVID. There was also in this particular set of deliverables, training, professional training for teachers and also public health personnel, and that was online training. It was mental health through online training as well. There was a small portion as well that was set aside for what was called sheltering. And that was if teachers had tested positive for COVID and needed to stay somewhere, chose not to go home, but that there would be hotel rooms or a place where they could stay if they didn't want to transmit an illness to their family members. Since this was allocated funding and not a competitive grant, it was also relatively new funding, so it was federal funding that passed through the state. So, the state also had to check with the federal funding source, excuse me, to determine if some of what we applied for was allowed or not. And so, of course, in the past month and a half, the final project scope has changed somewhat. So, for example, we had put in a request to hold a school nurse conference to assist school nurses as well in addressing COVID-related issues in schools. And the federal source had indicated that would not be covered. So essentially, what is covered now in this particular final scope, and we don't have the IGA yet to present to the board, this is strictly a description of what the funding would be used for. Essentially, it would be part-time, partial salaries of our school liaisons. It would also be online mental health training, train-the-trainer type of training, the food boxes, and wraparound services. Any questions or...
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you said wraparound services, I read in some of the background information that includes laundry, garbage, the hotels. Could you explain, I think you said that you've already explained the hotels, but how does removal of garbage and laundry play into it?
So, in our particular application, we didn't describe those services. What we described was a hotel sheltering service. And so, certainly, if those, those costs were provided as expenses that perhaps a family had, and this grant was specific to COVID, certainly, we could go back to the funding source and ask if it was possible to redirect some of the funds, that we were seeing that as a concern.
Okay. And does this, it says funding, funding resources and supplies to encourage and guide K-12 testing, I might put my glasses on, K-12 testing participation and assist with data to drive public health awareness and interventions. Does that mean that the people will be incentivized to take the vaccine with this grant?
No.
Okay. And then, could you describe pool testing?
Sure. Pool testing is something totally separate. It is not part of this grant, nor is it part of any grant that Pinnell County Public Health has sought. Pool testing has been offered to schools throughout the state of Arizona. It is a program that is offered through ADHS to various schools. And essentially, essentially, in basic terms, it's, you test a large number of students, perhaps the whole class, and all those tests go into a pool. And then, if there are positive tests, then there are other steps that are taken with further testing as well. With regard to Pinnell County's efforts, we do have, through the state, the state has provided us also with Abbott, take-home self-tests for K-12. And we have offered those to our school districts so that if there is someone who is ill or who is positive, and then there are other exposures around, school leadership can offer those take-home tests to parents and they can test at home. So we do have those through the Pinnell County Public Health Department. The pool testing right now, as of last week, with regard to Pinnell County schools that have signed up through that state-run project, there has been one Pinnell County school because we get a printout every week of those.
Okay. Well, thank you. We read the grant, I think must be from the state, that it had pool testing as a part of, but you didn't, you didn't ask for that.
Correct.
Okay. I have nothing else.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Board's pleasure on item A.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number A as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Nice to have it. Now, item B.
Okay. Item B is actually a funding request for approval for $40,267, which is essentially to assist us in paying for the salary of a third sexually transmitted disease, infectious diseases team member. Over the past year, we have seen an increase in sexually transmitted infections in our county, and this funds the salary, partial salary, of the person who is assigned to investigate syphilis cases. We have seen a tremendous increase in syphilis cases as well as other sexually transmitted infections compared with the rates to last year. And we are only in September, and those rates are based on calendar years. Extremely troubling as well to us with our syphilis rates is the increase in congenital syphilis, so babies born with syphilis. And we've already doubled that number from last year, and again, we're only in October. We also have extremely high rates of chlamydia. We're at 1,367 cases, and we still have October, November, and December to go. So, this request was made to the state to assist us with funding that position. Questions?
Questions?
No. You've covered the question I had, thank you.
Okay.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Seeing, hearing none? Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number B as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Nice to have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tasha. So, item number two is a discussion, approval, disapproval of amendment to the Pinnell County Environmental Health Code. Christopher Remus? There you are.
Excuse me. I'm Christopher Remus. I'm the Division Manager for Environmental Health in the Public Health Services District for Pinnell County. And so, previously, we had done a discussion with the board regarding the amendments to the health code and any questions that the board may have. These changes largely constitute obligatory changes where we're adopting state rule by reference. We didn't add really anything to those state rules and some minor changes to our permitting structure to increase efficiency and make it easier for applicants to navigate our systems and such. So, short of any question, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions at this time? This has a public hearing component to it, so seeing none. I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody from the public like to comment on this? Seeing one? We'll close the public hearing. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number eight as presented with no stipulations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Nice to have it. What?
No.
What did I do?
He said eight.
It was item two, Rod.
But he said eight, I think.
What did I say?
I don't know. Apparently, you messed it up.
I called out item number two. He did the presentation. Then I called for a public hearing. Then I closed the public hearing.
The motion referenced item eight and not...
Eight?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Well...
No, you did right.
Okay.
I believe it's two.
I did wrong. So...
He's got new math.
I do. Eight means two. So where are we at? Oh, and the codes.
Yeah.
Ah, number two. Okay. Item number two.
I'm the one that messed up. Okay, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number two as presented.
Now I'd second that.
You'll second that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And this was a test to see if you were all listening. And she's still not happy. She's...
You're not?
I'm going to adjourn the Public Health District meeting, get back to the board of supervisors' meeting. Fucking fucked it.
Now we're on item eight.
Folders, papers. Reconvene the board of supervisors' regular meeting. Brings us to item number eight. Which does have a public hearing component to it. Presentation will be eight, nine, and 10. Same project, I guess, so basically, we can do this whole thing.
Board, good morning.
Morning.
Gilbert O'Geehan, Senior Planner with Pinnell County. I'll be giving you guys the presentation for these next three proposals. This project is known as the Gardens at Gold Canyon. As mentioned before, three cases, they all require public hearings for each of them and separate motions for each of them, so let's get started. Maybe not. There we go. Okay. So the first proposal is for the non-major comprehensive plan amendment. It's to designate 5.22 acres from MLDR to medium-density residential. The next proposal is for a zone change from commercial to mixed dwelling, zoning district. And the last proposal is to kind of finish the project up with a PAD overlay, which is called the Gardens at Gold Canyon. The location is, it's along Kings Ranch Road in the Gold Canyon area. The applicant is the Almeade LLC, and he's the landowner, and Sanks and Associates is the applicant for this case. So this first map will give you perspective to where this property is at. It's all the way to the north of Pinnell County, as mentioned, in the Gold Canyon area. And the star represents our area. This gives you better perspective. It's a long, skinny, commercial lot that exists there. Several different parcels that are, that are part of the subject site. This gives you even a better look. These properties were zoned back about 20-plus years ago, and it shows each of them is a single lot that's zoned for commercial. And then, here we go. This is an aerial image that gives you even more perspective as to what it looks like right now. It's right off of an arterial roadway, so... And then, these are the amended development standards that have been recommended for approval by the commission. These are kind of like, they're more like condos, if you will, with some amenities with the single route, and I'll get into the details in a minute. But this gives you perspective as to what we're talking about. It's a long, skinny lot. There's a major roadway that goes in the middle of it. It has amenities. I believe it's over 30 units that are being proposed. Staff took a lot of time with this case. We had a lot of issues that came up in the beginning, but they've been resolved. We went to the, the planning is under commission with denial, but after some mitigation with the commission, we changed our vote to support the case. We amended some steps, I'll get into that in a minute. But staff feels that after working with them at the meeting, we have come to the conclusion that it's a, it's a good multifamily project. A lot of issues that were present have been resolved. This gives you a blow-up to what it looks like. It focuses the retention area and the clubhouse and pool that are there on the site. Gives you another image of what it looks like. It shows you kind of, the blue line is a sidewalk. One of the things that staff was concerned about with that, there wasn't going to be a sidewalk to separate those who live there from the road that's in the middle, and that's been resolved. There will be a full AD compliance sidewalk on both sides. And additional amenities that were added to, to the case, including landscaping. This gives you a typical floor, floor plan that shows you the way these things lay out, the way these units actually function. On the side of this, you can see, there's an amenity that you can buy that will allow you to store a small type of RV on the site. Now, there was concern that it would be a full size. It's not. It's a, it's been modified. They have done some things to the units to avoid any large fifth wheels or that type of RV going in place. But this, this is designed, if you choose to have the amenity, to accommodate smaller RVs. The applicant will get into the type of detail as far as what that is, but... There we go. Here's an image of the property to the north. If you've all been in Gold Canyon, this is a familiar area. This is to the east of the site, to the south, and to the west. So staff notes that we are in support of multifamily projects, and we do like this project because it encourages a different type of housing stock. We don't have a lot of multifamily, at least new, that exists in Pinnell County. We are seeing an aggressive amount of cases come up towards, especially the last year. This is one of them. This is one of them. So the planning commission did, did approve this case with additional changes to the steps or recommend approval.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
These are the stipulations that I added to here that just show you... Yes, sir.
I have a question. Are these rentals or are these for sale? Is this the...
I believe these are for sale, correct? Yes, sir. These are for sale, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So I added these to show you the, like, the progress that we had. One of the stipulations that was presented at the P and Z meeting was number 12. There was some concern as to some of the details within the project, but as I said, a lot of issues were resolved, one of them being too much concrete in some areas. They resolved that by adding more landscaping. Another one that was resolved was to add more trees to buffer the, the image right off of Kings Ranch Road. The topic of if this didn't go in there, what would happen? It's currently zoned commercial, so you could do a strip center. And one of the arguments that came up and one of the points of contention was the type of traffic that this is going to bring, a commercial project is going to have more traffic off of Ranch, Ranch, Kings Road, which is going to possibly slow down traffic as were, this project is going to bring your traffic off to the sides, and people are going to live there. Another item that was talked about was some staggering. Staff had asked for the owner of the project to stagger the buildings by two feet to add some more dimension to the site. They agreed to that. We take pride in this case because it took a lot of additional work to get it to this point, where staff is now wanting this case to go forward with approval. There we go. I've received no recent letters of opposition, or it was just one that came in that was part of the packet, but I've had no additional letters of support or approval for the case. If you have any questions or concerns, staff would be happy to answer, and the applicant is here to speak if you wish to speak to them. Any questions for me?
Questions for staff?
Actually, if you could go back to the other picture, keep, one of the pictures, go forward, not backwards. Keep going, right there. Go back. So in the distance, it appears like there's some already duplexes or something, or those homes right there.
Across the street, I believe that's a multifamily project.
Okay, all right.
Or is it a business?
Is multifamily?
It is multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Okay. You want to do, are we going to do all three of these presentations and then open a public hearing, or do, want me to open up one right now on this one?
I would combine them all at one time.
I'd combine them all.
Then just take some votes on each item.
Yeah, there we go. So...
No questions?
No questions. On to nine.
Do you have questions for the applicant or no?
I don't. Evidently not.
That works, too.
So you can go to item number nine now. Or is it, is there, is that all your presentation?
Yeah, that's for all three cases.
That's all three cases already?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sure, okay. So, no questions, I'll open up the public hearing on item number eight. Anybody like to comment on item number eight? Okay. Seeing none? I'll close the public hearing on item number eight. Board's pleasure? On item number eight.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number eight as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Nice having it. I'll open up the public hearing on item number nine. I'll close item number nine's public hearing. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve item number nine as presented with two stipulations.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Nice having it. And now I will open up the public hearing on number 10. Anybody from the public? Seeing none? I close item number 10's public hearing. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 10 as presented, and the planning commission approved nine to zero with 19 stipulations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Have it. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Brings us to item number 11. Discussion, approval, disapproval of fireworks display permit application.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, executive team. How are you today?
Good.
Good. Before you is a, a request and an application for Patriot Fireworks LLC, asking to, I'm sorry, Randy Tracy, interim HR Director and interim Risk Management Director. This individual was, and I'll give you a little history of this as to why he's before you today. Last year, he submitted an application for fireworks display in May, along with about four others, just before the weekend. And inadvertently, I approved him with the other four. They had ample insurance coverage. I had an oversight. I take full responsibility. I do apologize. But he was inadvertently sent with that group for approval. He did not have adequate coverage at that time. So unbeknownst to the individual that owns this company, he was allowed to go forward with those firework efforts. Thankfully, there was no incidents. But now he's back wanting an exception to our insurance requirements again this year. And although it was an oversight previously, after reviewing it this year, Risk Management is not going to be able to support that because he doesn't have adequate insurance coverage as stipulated by what we work with ASAP to establish. So currently, we have routinely enforced a $3 million occurrence and $6 million aggregate for special events that include fireworks or carnival rides. We do have a document from ASAP that goes out to all the members, and they're actually asking for $5 million occurrence because of the increases to structural costs and property damage that has occurred recently. I did speak with the owner, and I explained what the situation was. And additionally, I also spoke to ASAP. And they did recommend that six, three and six is the minimum, but they would recommend that we stay there for now instead of the five because the insurance market is, like all other markets, very difficult to acquire those levels. So they are recommending that we stay with the three and the six for any special events that include fireworks or carnival rides. So, have questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor, good then.
So with what you're stating there, going in at, at what the request is the applicant puts us at risk without the liability of ASAP to support us?
Yes, sir. ASAP would continue to follow what their agreement is in terms of their maximum payout. Were there an incident with only $1 million of coverage, then they would have to make up the gap. And what's going to occur is it's going to come out of the membership pool, which, just like any other kind of incident, if we have an at-fault, it's probably going to impact our contributions moving forward.
Right. So it increases our liability, or potentially it increases our liability?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is the applicant here, you said? Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to speak to the applicant?
Yeah, if I could.
I think the other thing about the pool, they could ask us to kick us out.
Good morning, Matt Smith, Patriot Fireworks owner.
I guess, it might, for me, because this is my district, I have a question. I know you sent a letter of hardship to our county manager, which I have a copy of right here. And, and I, I understand, and this is something that traditionally has happened in these high schools for years and, years and years and years, and so... But I guess my question is, the difference, obviously, the hardship is the premium, correct?
Correct. The...
What is that amount, if I might ask?
The, the dollar amount that I pay?
Yeah. For, in the difference between your $1 million and $3 million?
It actually, the only one that they can cover is $1 million and, the $1 million, $2 million policy, and then a $4 million, $6 million policy.
You'd have to make that kind of a jump to be able to cover...
Yep.
Our fanny as well.
Yep, the difference is $10,000 per year.
Okay. And, and I guess that's where, I guess, have you talked to the other school districts in regards to this?
I haven't talked to this...
See if they would be willing to make up the difference on this?
I haven't. I really only cover three schools and shoot about six events a year. So the, and I'm already doing the shows themselves at a reduced rate so that they can afford it. Like, I don't even, I don't go to the school and tell them, hey, this is what it costs. I actually go to the school and sit down with the student council advisor and the student council and say, what do you have that you can afford? Because there are years that they've come back and they've said, we don't have it to do it. And I said, listen, give me what you have, and I'll, and then I'll make up the difference.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that, that helps me. I guess, I guess with that being said, I, I would, I'm not sure that I, I'm comfortable putting the county at risk with these liabilities in the, in the, for that additional amount. I don't think I'm, I'm one that is willing to do that. However, I think if, one of the things that I could do in, in some type of a motion on this is that put a stipulation that we approve this with the stipulation that you meet those requirements and then go back to the schools because you've got October 22nd.
Right.
And be able to go and raise those funds, or have the community help raise those funds, or have the school districts help raise those funds to give you that, to cover that gap. And so that's where I'm prepared to go with this, if that's possible, asking legal.
It's possible to do, but I would turn to the applicant and just question, would he have sufficient time to go and procure that additional insurance, you know, for these next three weeks?
Okay. I guess that...
It would be extremely difficult. I'll just be honest.
Okay.
To raise that kind of money.
Well, I've already stated where I'm at on this, so Supervisor?
Well, my thoughts, if you, if, if time was the, maybe the optimum thing that this gentleman needs to try and, and generate the funds, we could, we could put it, we have another meeting on the 20th, I believe?
Yes, Chairman, that is correct.
You know, and we could put it back on an agenda on the 20th. That would be two days before your event, if, if you were able to generate the insurance, the revenues, or whatever it takes to get to be able to do that.
That's possible. I do have one question.
Okay.
Of how, originally, I was purchasing all of my permits through Rural Metro, and then this summer, it passed back hands. So the requirement, I was meeting the requirement for the school, and the school's requirement was $1 million, $2 million policy. And then I submit them all of my information, and then as soon as the county took the, back the issuing of the permit, it changed my requirements. And I don't know how to, it's whoever the authority is having jurisdiction, because I've been told that Rural Metro now no longer has the authority to issue the fireworks permit, and it's now the county's responsibility.
And, and Mr. Chair, I've always been in the, under the impression that it's us that issues that permit. I know the school themselves have been late multiple times getting that request to us, that we've actually made the decision in the final hour before the fireworks were supposed to be done. And that's something that we're trying to get the schools to, to make that switch. They know these graduations are coming up. They know these special events are coming up. And so this, quite honestly, since I've been in this office, this is the earliest that it's ever come before us.
Right, and it's because I've been made aware. I worked with Rural Metro for...
And that's great, because we're headed in the right direction, so I appreciate that.
We have an attorney here that I think might be able to shed some light on this perfect process.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kevin Costello, County Attorney's Office. It is the Board of Supervisors that approves fireworks permits. They are considered a large special event under our code, and they are to come before you as the Board of Supervisors for approval. If Rural Metro or any other fire organization has represented in the past that they could approve those, then that was an error. It is for the Board of Supervisors to approve these permits. One of the things, talking about the amount of insurance, the specific requirement is that the person responsible for the fireworks display shall provide a certificate or certificates of insurance in an amount to be determined by the county. Practice has been, and with ASAP's recommendation, to require those, but there has not been a specific amount established by the board. So if you choose to, it is within your purview to either approve or deny this request. You have the authority to use your discretion. One of the things I would caution, in addition to the liability that's been raised, if the specific practice and requirements of ASAP are, are not followed, and you begin to make exceptions, you leave yourself, the county also open to, if you make an exception here, and later you choose, for whatever reason, as a board, not to make an exception, then you'll have a claim of, you just didn't like my particular type of event. You're, you're discriminating against me. You've done it in the past for someone else, so that's an additional concern that, that you may want to consider in looking at this request. If you have any questions.
Comments?
You know, so if that's being, based on your recommendation, Mr. Chair, if I might, I, I would like to move this till the 20th, and so make it a motion in that.
Continue?
Continue, okay.
Okay. Continue to a date certain, like the 20th?
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we move this to October 20th on our next board agenda and, and for our consideration.
So I have a motion to continue this item to the October 20th?
Second.
And moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I might continue, I'll help you.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Okay? Reach out to me, reach out to my office. We have several individuals over there, as well as companies, that more than likely would be willing to help participate in raising the funds necessary.
Okay, I'll send you an email later today.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well done. Brings us to item number 12. Discussion, approval, disapproval of acceptance of an award from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $76,000. Oh, there we go. Get to the part who's going to present here.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. This item before you is a memorandum of understanding with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security and the Arizona Department of Administration for these funds. And I'll just explain a little bit what this is. So every year, the Arizona Department of Homeland Security puts out their state homeland security grant program. And for many, many years, the Arizona Department of Administration has been an applicant to receive funds from Homeland Security to do their cybersecurity training throughout the state. The U.S. Department of Homeland Security has changed that and has said that they could no longer be an applicant, state-to-state sort of thing. And so Homeland Security and the Department of Administration reached out to all of the counties and asked all of the counties to submit an application for these funds and then execute a memorandum of understanding that then, if awarded, the counties would give the monies to the, to the Arizona Department of Administration via Homeland Security. So the funds would never come to us. They would go straight over from Homeland to Administration. And so when we were notified of the award, the sample memorandum of understanding or the little... the sample memorandum of understanding, or the little short memo that was provided by the state, is the memorandum of understanding that they had provided to all of the counties and wanted to have executed. This is not unlike what we have been doing for years through our emergency operations or management group, when they do a similar MOU for training as well. So that is what this item is, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also have Jerry Keely here too, to answer any questions about what the cybersecurity training would include.
Okay. Any questions or comments about this? I know that our IT people spend a lot of time slinging off the bad guys, so I'm sure any help they can get is welcomed. Seeing no comments or questions? Bill, board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 12 as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, say nay? I just have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion approval disapproval of granting SRP power distribution easements. There he is.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kevin Costello of the County Attorney's Office, here on behalf of Public Works. This is an easement for SRP to bring power across a piece of county property. It is to serve the use on the county property. The reason that this is before you, specifically a regular item and not a consent item, is the board has the ability to approve easements for utilities across county property, but it requires unanimous, without an auction, but it requires unanimous approval of the board. So we put this as a regular item in order to make sure we could document unanimous approval if the board so chooses. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Okay, board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 13 as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, say nay? Thank you. Brings us to item number 14 on the agenda. Discussion approval disapproval of a creation of a new GIS. Cat, cat or druck, well, anyway, specialist.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Douglas Wolfe, Penal County Assessor. Well, circling back, because in July, June, whenever we had our budget, we got to add three new positions to the GIS department, and through a series of, some employee problems and what have you, we have had, we need more people. The flow of parcels needed to be worked in this county doesn't seem to be trending down or even flat. It's still on an accelerating curve. And about three weeks ago, at the, with the help of Supervisor Goodman, Supervisor Sertie, we had about 20 small developers come, and we spoke to them, and they supported our idea of getting more people, and to help them get their business done. And Jeff was, is here, I think, he came back? Spoker, or Eric, sorry, Eric came back earlier, and he spoke in support of this, and there's a group that he represents. So I want to thank Mary Ellen Shepard and Randy Tracy for working really hard to get these items into the form that the board needs to consider them. Also, my chief jeopardy, John Elland, who's here. We also changed the designation for the people in this department, so their GIS, which is cartography, which gave them a boost in income, and so hopefully we won't lose them as quickly to other counties or other cities. And we're also going to give up our training room, because we're out of space to put people. When we get these people, when we, assuming they're hired, we're going to have to, we're going to have to just fill up the building, and we'll be at our maximum capacity. To circle back with what we asked for a little bit ago, I think Supervisor Kavanaugh asked that we advertise out of state for the positions that we did approve. And sure enough, we did get somebody to come from Oregon, coming down to Florence, Arizona, so, woo-hoo, that'll be good. At the end of this process, if, if approved, we'll have 11 total people. Where about, a year ago, we had like four, basically. And so I would urge the board to go ahead and approve these positions so that we can try to catch up with the flow and the tsunami that we're experiencing. Thank you. Take any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Supervisor Goodman?
Yeah, I, I asked my staff members to pull together a timeline of when, when we actually started to see some kind of an error, or some problems. It was, not an error, but some problems, and the backlog that was taking place. In June 10th of 2020 last year, the county budget, you presented a budget for 80, an additional 83,000 increase for your assessor's office, which we granted. Then August 26th of 2020, in a board meeting, you asked for additional staff to be added to the cartography department, and BOS granted requests. I said that right, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. And that was August 26th of 2020.
Yes, sir.
We granted that. In December 18th, 2020, you started to see, we started to see emails from the developers, and Supervisor Sertie and myself began to see those type of emails come forward. I don't know if any of the other board members did. So, and stating that there was a seven-month delay in the process. Then each month after that, beginning January of 2021, we received communication by five or more developers stating the same comment, that these things were going to be seven to eight months out, even a year in some cases. So we started to go through the process of trying to help correct some of the issues and the problems that you were facing in your department over there. In addition to that, we helped put things together with Mary Ellen, and thank you, Mary Ellen, and thank you for giving her kudos to that, in the HR department to help move things forward. Adjustments have been made, correct?
Correct.
To the salaries?
Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure we're very clear on this, because I think there's some misunderstanding on, out there, that we as a board have not been supportive of this.
Well, I would disagree with that. I, my feedback to the developers is that they, you as the board sits and controls the number of positions we have and what they're paid, that I don't have free, free range to give somebody a spot bonus or anything like, and I think that's where the miscommunication was, more than anything.
And that's fine, I just want to make sure that the public as a whole knows very much that we as a board are trying to move these things forward, and be, and do our due diligence behind this. So my question is, I have a few questions here. So, with that, one of the things is, is there continues to be a backlog, right?
Yes, of course.
Do you have a, with these new hires, and some of the processes and procedures that you're doing right now, in conjunction with some of the, the things that you're working with our community development, right? To help move things forward on these APN numbers, or something that's going to help move things forward? Do you feel confident, with your request here, that this is going to help reduce the amount of workload that, or the lag time that's there currently, and going into the future? And how, do you have an idea what kind of timeframe you're looking, that it's going to help clear up lag time?
Sure. Well, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Goodman, I'd like to say absolutely, I'm certain of that, but I can't. We have some issues with some of our current employees that I can't discuss in public, that inhibit our ability to do some of the things we'd like to do. The second factor is, whoever we bring in, there is a training time of about six months before we actually let people touch those parcels. So, the people that we brought in August timeframe, it'll take them a while to get up to speed. Whoever we bring in post facto of this meeting, it'll take them time to get up to speed. I will know probably by December, January, if we even need more people. It's possible, because of the curve of the number of parcels that are coming into the county. I just, it's astounding what's happening. But right now, I'd say this is what's adequate for today, based on the current volume. It's just a matter of time, and I think our goal is, it was 90 days, that's what our original goal was, for issuing APNs. We're trying to get back to that. The IT department has helped us with the preliminary APNs that we've been able to get up now on the website, that's helped a great deal. But I wish I could predict the future and say for certain, but I can't.
Okay. But, as long as we're feeling that you're comfortable with the way things are going, that's for me, anyway. With, with the support that we're giving you currently, with the requests that you're asking if we approve this, if this is going to help move things forward, number one.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Goodman, absolutely yes. I'm completely comfortable with what the actions the boards have taken. If anything, you could look to me and say, maybe I've been too conservative hiring new staff a year ago. I could have maybe come, come here earlier, I'll, I'll take that on me.
Please do, because I, you know, we don't, unless we know there's a problem, unless we know there's a problem, okay? And that's, make that very clear to the entire, our entire elected officials and every, unless we know there's a problem, we can't do anything about it. So when these things come noticeable, you know, we've, the first time I ever found about it was from our builders community. That's when I first was alerted to our problems with APNs. So, with that, I'm just, anyway, your turn.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Goodman, Supervisor Goodman. There's, there's a, there's two sets of problems in a way, because you have the smaller developers who do stuff in less than 10 acres, or 15 acres, somewhere in there. And then you have the very large developers, they never complain, because they, they are well-funded, well-capitalized, they have staff to do all the stuff that they need to do, respond to our office. Smaller developers don't have those tools. So, part of the reason is just the environment they're in, that they have to deal with right now, is unusual, to say the least, as far as the volume is concerned. But, by the fact that they came in, and we responded less than a month here, we're back, and we're putting more staff on this, I don't think we can do it any faster, any better at this time, as far as the board's concerned, or as far as my office is concerned.
Okay. And, and Mr. Chair, if I might, continue. Some of the concern that I have personally, in regards to, you made comment about some of these splits, these minor land divisions. In some of these cases, whether it's market-driven, or whatever the case may be, but they're taking 20, 30 acres, splitting it by five, and then somebody else is right there immediately, taking another five, and then somebody else is taking another five. And it happens extremely fast, which, if I'm not mistaken, there's something called Wildcat subdivision, and I, and I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm in an area that I probably need to seek counsel from our legal advice, some legal counsel, and so I'll keep my mouth shut on that one right now. But, I just, I'm just putting it out there, because we really need the developers to actually work with us on a lot of these things too.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Goodman, my response to that would be, we do first in, first out. So whoever presents their, their documents, that's how we follow, that's how the stack is built up. However, there were, and are developers who do exactly what you said, is try to get splits combined or done in one transaction, when in reality, they should be back of the line with everyone else. And that has caused a lot of problems for our cartography people, to have those splits on top of splits on. In fact, we have people coming in and saying, well, I'm buying this next week, and I'm going to split it the week after, and I'm going to split it again after that, and we have to say, we can't do that, because, you know, you have to follow the process in order to get it done. So, I wouldn't use the term necessarily Wildcat, maybe just entrepreneurs, how's that? That are trying to get it done as fast as they can, because they're, they're not capitalized as well as the large developers. And it's completely understandable, I used to be in the business. And if I could do it myself, I probably would have, you know, on the other side.
And I appreciate, Mr. Chair, if I might, I appreciate what you're stating, because I'm a capitalist myself. But one of the things that we need from our developers as well is more input, more ability to move forward. If we're going to continue on in this process, as the, as the supply and demand is there, and it doesn't look like it's going to slow down.
Nope.
We've got to be able to have them involved in the process, you involved, and our community development as we move forward in these.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, I couldn't agree more. What we're seeing, because Penal County is doing things with Lucid, and, you know, all the magnificent manufacturing growth, is the big players are coming into Penal County. So it's going to be harder and harder for the smaller developers, basically, to survive, because they're going to get outbid on a lot of things, and I think that's just the trend, because Penal County is the place for money is going to be. So we got to help them as much as we can with what we have in, but that, that is the reality of capitalism, is the big guys can come in and buy out anybody, and they do, they're doing it.
Thank you, that's all I need, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Mr. Wolfe.
Good morning, sir.
And I'll say that Mr. Wolfe is a conservative, and a fiscal conservative, and has not asked for these positions in the past, maybe to his credit. Besides, beside my disagreement on the pictometry value, I appreciate the way he fiscally runs his office. Our, there's a link, copublishing.com/azpenalkcounty, it's the Penal County Minor Land Division Code. And Section C, it says, a completed application shall be reviewed in 30 days. And will start once the application is determined to be complete by the planning department. And Section D says, if review is not completed within 30 days from receipt of the properly completed action, excuse me, application, the land division shall be deemed approved. How does that play into with what you're doing with these new employees?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I'm not an expert on the MLDs, and I'd have to defer to Lester Chow on those regulations. All I know is, our part of that process is providing the APNs, the Assessor Parcel Numbers. So how that fits into their schema, I would be wrong for me to address something I really don't know anything about.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, but that's a good-
Well-
Go ahead, Super Ray.
Well, I'll just say, and I, last, was it the last meeting, when the contractors came up here and implied that the Board of Supervisors was the holdup here? I mean, and I looked back, we've approved basically seven items, counting today, if this is to pass. And I think we've been pretty open to your requests and your desires going forward. So, I was a little set back by those comments by the contractors, maybe misunderstood, misled, missed something. But, you know, Assessor Wolfe, we are really here to try and help and work together to help these people move forward with their projects. So, if there's other things we can do or need to do, you know, don't hesitate to reach out to us.
Well, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I think the miscommunication again was just that there was an impression, because they come from the private sector, that I had control of my, my positions and the salaries and everything generated. And I got to explain, no, that has to be adjudicated by the Board of Supervisors and through the proper channels of human resources, and that's why people don't go into government. They wouldn't be in, if you're in the private sector, you can just say, I want to give you a raise, and that's that, and nobody says, no, you can't do that. So I think that's where the disconnect was, so, and I don't want you to have the impression that I was throwing anybody under the bus, as far as I was concerned. I'm just trying to explain the process, so they understood what I had to deal with, what you have to deal with, in order to follow the laws and statutes and the budgetary requirements of the county.
Yeah, we can't run it like a business. It's not a business.
It's not a business.
So, anyway, all right, any other questions or comments?
Oh.
So, on this position?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 14 as presented.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Moving, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? I just have it.
Point of personal privilege, Mr. Chairman. It is National Buy a Cup of Coffee Day for a cop. So I'd encourage everyone, if you see police officers, buy them a cup of coffee, it's the national day for that. And I'd also like to say, requesad in pacem, my poor Latin, for rest in peace to Frank Pratt. Worked with him over the years as a legislator, and he was always open and asked questions, and was more accessible than most in the state ledge, and he'll be missed, he really will, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for those kind words.
Thanks, Douglas.
Actually, I have somebody before you. Mr. Lane, Mr. Lane, I understand that you, come forth, please. Kind of didn't, weren't following the process, we had a, we had a public comment, and I'm going to allow you, we're going to kind of go backwards to public comment, and I'll allow you to, to go ahead and state your, your state, statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is George Lane, and I'm a homeowner on 1704 East Loveland. Main crossroads is Germaine and Kenworthy. And this has been brought up about two years ago, but I live on Loveland, it's a dirt road. And it is bad. It went through here a couple of years ago about maybe having it paved. I've lived there 15 years, and it's been talked about and paved, and I'm here- I've lived there 15 years and it's been talked about and paved and I'm here for the, for the neighborhood. We have two different dump truck, or garbage people that come down, Republic and Rad. One comes three days a week, that's twice in one day up and down. The other one, twice a week. We have dump trucks, mixers, deliveries and all the mail. And plus the, the people that live there and they don't know what slow means. I'll wave my arms to slow, have them slow down and it's 30 plus to minus in there and my wife says, honey, don't do that. You're going to get shot. So I'd like to see if we can't get that paved with speed bumps. And that's my, it's heck when you got a house, these are semi-custom homes and you have it cleaned, two hours later, it's dusty to the windows, to the doors. And that's my agenda for today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lane. We will have staff look into what the situation is out there.
I thank you. Thank you for the time and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Guess seeing how already backed this place up, we'll get in trouble for this one of these days.
Actually, I just wanted to speak to item number 14, which you guys just voted on. I just wanted to clear some miscommunication. Like we had some people that were pretty fired up, you know, a month ago because nothing, this problem came to a head and nobody was really aware of it. And so I think everybody just kind of got caught with their pants down and then the public was frustrated with it. And I just want to acknowledge you guys have, have been super responsive and I just want to say thank you for, both to Assessor Wolfe and to the board for responding as quickly as you have. I've worked with government and this is, this is light speed reaction. So I just want to say thank you and we really do appreciate your support. We are doing our best to support our Penal County.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see here. Oh, wait, wait. He has to acknowledge you, not me. I was just, I thought you were waving.
What are you doing?
I thought he was waving.
What?
Well, I was.
What do we got going here? What's going on?
Sir, well, what's your comment? Come forth, come forth, state your name and make it brief.
Brett Marchant, I just want to tell you all thank you.
Okay.
That's all. Appreciate your job and I like you.
Okay. We'll take that comment. Where are we at? 15?
15.
Item number 15, executive session. Yay. Do I have a motion to go into exec session?
So ordered.
So moved.
So moved.
I, I would second that motion to go into executive session.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Okay, we're in exec session.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to reconvene our Board of Supervisors meeting. I believe we're on item number 17, which is a decision approval disapproval of a conditional settlement proposal. Any questions of the attorney?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as discussed, you know, we've been presented with a potential settlement agreement from the Attorney General's Office that we've discussed with you in executive session and we're looking for authority to, once that actual document comes across our desk, to be able to execute it on behalf of the board and also to work with our neighboring communities to get their agreement also.
Any other questions, comments? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a conditional settlement proposal with the three opioid distributors and one, and one manufacturer and authorize our county attorney and chairman to execute all necessary documents and as discussed, and, and working in coordination with all of our cities.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Ayes have it. Brings us to item number 18, which is a discussion approval or disapproval of authorizing the county attorney to prepare and the chairman to execute settlements and release, related to the owner and lease of property at 302 East Fifth Street, Eloy. Any questions, any more comments?
Mr. Chair, I'm of the, we approve item 18 as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Ayes have it. We have number 19. Does board have anything that they would like to see on an agenda in the future? Okay, hearing or seeing none? This reading is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.